Good evening. We're going to open our June 30th, 2020 Board of Education meeting with a pledge that's going to be led by Ms. Carpenter, and I will say a prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear God, we just come to you tonight and ask that you be with us and help us and guide us in the decisions that we're making, and we just pray that a sense of peace and comfort will just settle down on each of us. We're just all living in such uncertain times, and some days it feels like we don't know what the next step should be or is going to be, but we just ask for your guidance and help as we walk through these days and times. Lead us and guide us, in your name I pray. Amen. So we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order.
Ms. Burns, I would request that we add one board policy to the agenda. I was waiting to see if I was going to get it back in time for us to look at, and that's Policy 6125. And I believe that everybody has a copy of that now.
Yes.
And that's the only addition that I see unless any of you should happen to have an addition as well.
Do any other board members have an addition to our agenda? Okay. So we'll have to vote on this, I can never remember. Approve the agenda as written with the addition of Policy 6125.
Let me get my sheet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
And that was unanimous. Thank you.
I've grouped all of the board policies in particular orders for you, and I did that to try and to save you just a little bit of time, because a lot of the policies that you're looking at right now are technical additions, and there's no use to really spend a whole lot of time here talking about those unless you just want to. But I do want to go through some of them because there are some implications that we need to be familiar with. The first one that I would draw your attention to has to do with the use of personal technology to conduct school business. That's Policy number 3228. The purpose of this policy is just to protect and to notify staff that if they choose to use personal technology devices, that they lose a good level of privacy unless they do it a particular way. Karen Cook has found a way for us to actually take cell phones and kind of split them into two purposes, and one is personal and the other is professional. And then by doing that, it gives the school system an opportunity to go into that professional side and to delete information, and the purpose for that is to make sure that no professional private electronic storage has happened on there that could be problematic for staff or for us. And that doesn't mean that we're going to be looking at phones or we're going to be a big brother looking over shoulders. That's not the goal. It's just to protect the information from getting out into the public. Case in point on that, Sam Patilla had a cellphone, and he was at a conference. While he was at a conference, someone stole the cellphone. And by having that kind of opportunity with the phone, we can wipe that information off the phone regardless of who has it from there. Okay? The other piece that people in our school system need to understand is that if they store any information on a private device, that can be problematic for them as well. If they use their private device and they conduct professional business on it, that actually gives us the right and it gives us the right to look at other things on there that we really don't need to have any part of. So by notifying them of that, and I'll draw your attention to the very end of the policy, Section C, all employees must be informed annually of the terms of the policy and the methods by which they can obtain a copy of this policy. What we'll do is we'll ask for every single person in the school system to sign a letter of understanding at the beginning of the school year, and that way we'll all be on the same page. Again, this is not an attempt to be big brother. This is an attempt to protect our staff, but at the same time protect the information that is part of the school system. And that's all. Okay? So I would encourage you to study that policy, and the next time we get together, since this is first reading, if you have any further questions, or if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, I would be happy to try and answer those for you, and then we'll bring them up for the public to understand. Okay? Another policy that you need to note, I don't think that it's that big of a deal really, is Policy 4334. It has to do with unmanned aircraft, drones.
Found this one really interesting.
Okay? There are liabilities that come along with that, and there are responsibilities that anyone in the school system who is going to be using a drone needs to meet. There is actually license to operate these. Just policy puts us in a good position so that we can say, no, you have to do X, Y, and Z, and there are limitations on places where we can use drones. For example, we really shouldn't be using drones at football or any outdoor athletic event at all, because if you lose control of the drone and it flies into the public or into the crowd, there can be injury, and then there's liability. So that's basically all that that policy is for. Also, you'll notice that behind that, there are several other policies. There is another policy that goes along with that, and that's just bookkeeping. That's all. Okay? Just wanted you to see that one. The next one that I really think you need to pay attention to is Crowdfunding 7360. If you had a chance to look at it, crowdfunding has to do with the practice of using online services to raise money. I can't think of the groups that we've used on this sometimes. Some of our crowdfunders, can you think of any crowdfunding names right now? Because I can't. I can't think of it right now. GoFundMe. So one of the concerns is if a teacher uses any of these crowdfunding sources, and they attach the school system's name to it in any way, it looks like the school system is doing that, and we just want to be careful with that. All right? Now, what Toby has done already is developed an approval process for all social media and other technical resources where the teacher or the group will apply to use some type of a social media site like Twitter or something like that. Then it has to be approved, and they have to be able to affix a symbol that he has designed. And if you see that symbol on their face page, it says that this has been approved by Swain County Schools. If that symbol isn't there, then we have recourse to say, you have to take that down. Okay? So all of those pieces are coming together with this as a protection so that we stay within the other policies, including, oh, let me see, they're listed here on the second page, grants and funding for special projects, ethics and purchasing, and gifts and bequests. All right? All of those are covered inside of this policy. Again, I would encourage you to look carefully at this one, and if you have questions about it, ask me, and then we can get that to Chris Campbell, whatever you need.
And this crowdfunding policy covers any entity, including extracurriculars if they were going to crowdfund like that?
The only group that it doesn't cover are PTOs.
Is PTO. Yeah, I saw that.
Okay. Because PTOs are supposed to be standalone, and there are, I am pushing, and I have been pushing, our extracurriculars, if they have a boost organization, for that to be standalone as well. Sometimes that's hard to achieve.
Yeah.
Okay?
We have had teachers who have done those things, pages like to get separate metal books for their classes, or I think maybe they got a, forgot a printer or something. I can't remember what, and I know that we've had several teachers that have done those things.
Yeah, they have, and we have a process for that, Lambert. There is a request form that they have to use to do that or to get any type of a donation, and we will be using that same form for all of our crowdfunding sources as well.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Now, there are several more, and I know that I'm going quickly, but there are so many tonight that I don't want to belabor any of them, okay? Extracurricular activities, Policy 3620, the big piece on that is on the second page to me, where it says that a student participating in high school interscholastic athletics may participate only on the team consistent with the gender of the student's birth certificate unless otherwise permitted under North Carolina High School Athletic Association rules and regulations. This policy falls right in line with NCHSSA. And I have to tell you that right now, there are court cases that are happening in the Northeast in both directions on this, so this may shift at some point, but if it does, of course, we'll bring it back to you. But I wanted you to know that that will be the stance of our school system unless you decide to take it a different direction. Okay? Questions on that one? Staff-student relations.
Female, we have had female students who played football before.
And that's acceptable, but if we had a gender-based sport, for example, the difference in softball and baseball is basically gender, and we can do it that way because we offer for both. That fits Title IX. But if a female was going through a gender change, and I don't know if we would call her a he or a she at that point, you know, depending upon where he is or she is in the process, and they wanted to play baseball, they would have to have their birth certificate addressed so that they could play on a male-dominated sport. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay? All right. Staff-student relations, the only thing that I wanted you to see on staff-student relations is that they've added the word volunteer.
Yes.
And I think that's significant.
That's good.
I think that everyone understands that there are certain types of relationships that our staff should be involved in and not be involved in, but it extends to our volunteers now. And what that means is that that's going to have to be included in their volunteer training. Okay? It's just something else for us to watch out for, but it's actually a protection for the students, and it's a protection for our staff members as well. Okay? That's the big difference in that particular policy.
May I ask a question about that?
Sure.
On the first page, it says, where it says the purposes including but not, does not include student employees or student volunteers. Is that volunteers within our school system or like a college student volunteering?
I don't know that it's specified on that. And you know what? That probably needs to be specified.
That's a good question, yeah. Because the student-employee would be considered...
And there's no definition in here, or definition section, about what students mean.
What come to my mind was that was like a college student who was, I don't know, working here part-time versus a student within our system.
Agree. I was pretty certain I knew where you were going with that. I'm going to put that question to Chris Campbell, and we may need to add some verbiage there.
Okay.
This includes independent contractors, right?
Yes, it does. That's a good question, Kim. Thank you. Joe, when we're going down through here, would you make notes on those so that I can make sure I remember? I'm getting so old, I can't remember much anymore. Policy 4240, we kind of have spoken about just a little bit before. It has to do with child abuse reports, and there's a duality that's happening in the school system now, because when a student is in pre-K, they are licensed by a different organization. They're actually, let me see if I can remember who it is right now, the Department of Health and Human Service Division of Child Development. And so all of the abuse reporting needs to go to that organization if it's a pre-K student. Okay? And then if it's above that, it goes through our typical channels. Now, it's interesting here that it says in the last sentence of that first paragraph, where the source of the child abuse, neglect, dependency, or maltreatment is uncertain, a report should be made to both the county, Child Welfare Agency, and the Department of Health and Human Services. So if you're not certain, you report both ways. All right? It's just a very strong protective action, but I wanted you to see that that's what it was saying and understand that there is a duality that's happening now. Okay? That's really the primary difference in that policy, though. Questions about that one? 4325 has to do with drugs and alcohol. They've changed some things around. The big change has to do with the fact that they, down in Section A, Line J, they've included CBD and THC. We've talked about those before, and I think that it's a wise policy, because what they've said is that those really can't be brought in and be used without a doctor's approval. And so if you go downtown to Bob's Pharmacy, which doesn't exist, and you buy something that has THC, not THC, but CBD in it, you can't bring it into the school system and use it. Okay? And I think that's important for us. Now, I have a question on this policy, and I have already sent it to Chris Campbell. If you'll look at Line 1, under A, they have struck the word transmitting, and they have inserted the word delivering, and personally, I see a difference in those two words, because I have seen at times that students have tried to use an excuse that I wasn't selling it to them, I wasn't delivering it to them, I just happened to have it. And I think that we need to be very careful on that. All right? So what I did was asked Chris to give me an explanation of the difference in those two words, and tell me if I'm worrying about nothing. Okay? And so as soon as he can get to it, he'll send us an answer, and I'll have that answer for us at the next board meeting. Okay? Questions on that one? Weapons and threats and things like that, the big piece to me is on Page number 2, down where it says middle and high school students, it's in the middle, middle and high school students may also utilize the anonymous safety tip line. That's been added intentionally, and I just wanted to draw your attention to that. We do have that anonymous tip line, and I can't remember the name of it at this moment, but it has been very, very effective. Our staff was very concerned when we switched over, because they were afraid that they were going to get all kinds of calls in the middle of the night, and they have not. The screening process that's going on with that particular company is outstanding. Now, there have been some times when we've gotten phone calls and some alerts, but they were truly needed. So it's working really well.
Good.
The other piece that I want you to see, though, is under Section 2, Line A, where it says regardless of whether the student intends to or has the means to carry out the threat. If a kid makes a threat, if a person makes a threat, they're guilty. It doesn't mean if they're kidding, kidding doesn't matter. And I think that that's really important to make note of. Okay? I don't know if you've had a chance to look at anything else on there that you would have questions about tonight. I would encourage you to study this one.
It's pretty thorough, huh?
It's thorough.
Well, changes like that one be delivered, and the students will be informed of it.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. They will. 5210, the reason that I'm bringing this to your attention is because of the last paragraph under A, and I'm bringing it to your attention because when it came to my attention, I immediately emailed Chris, and I said, wait a minute, this is not how we've been operating, and he said, but it should have been, and I didn't know. So I've learned something. School officials may not remove any political sign lawfully placed, except as provided in this section, but they request that the Department of Transportation remove the sign. If it's on the state right-of-way, we can't touch it, even if it's our property, state right-of-way, we can't touch it, but we can ask that the Department of Transportation remove it, particularly if it's a visual block or something like that. Okay? I just wanted you to see that so that we would have recognition and so that the public would know, since we're coming into election season.
So then, but it's not lawful, or am I correct in my thinking that it is not lawful for a sign to actually be on school property?
No, it has to be within the road right-of-way.
Road right-of-way.
Yes.
So if it's actually on our property, then we could remove it if we...
Not if it's in the state, not if it's in the road right-of-way.
But I'm saying, so what if somebody doesn't know that, and they like flat out put it, I'll just say, in the middle of a football field?
Yes, we can.
You know, then we can remove it.
What I would suggest to our building-level administration at that point is, get the name of the person, call that person, have that person move it. Because, you know, somebody sees us out there taking down a political sign, and we've opened ourselves up to all kinds of criticism.
Right.
So it'd be better if that person moved it for us.
But I guess I just wanted to clarify in my head that the only place around a school is within that state right-of-way.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Right-of-way at the high schools is about 200 feet on each side.
It's 100 feet on each side, isn't it? Is it 100 or 200 each way?
At the entrance from the school.
It's huge.
Yeah.
100 feet on each side of the center line of the road?
Isn't that right?
It's, they're all different, so it's...
We had DOT look into that, and I'm almost positive, Travis, they said 100 feet on each side of the center line.
It's similar to our railroad is. It's huge.
I understand it's 200.
They don't even have right-of-way.
What did Lambert say?
Yeah. Lambert said he thinks that some roads don't have a right-of-way, and that's possible, I don't know. It's huge.
That's amazing.
The next one is the medication piece, and again, this kind of mirrors what we've already talked about with THC and CBD. There are some pieces in there, and what we did was we took our current medication policy, which was very effective, and we took the new pieces out of the new policy and inserted them into our policy. Okay? Because when I spoke with Carol, she felt better about that. So what I'm going to do now is take the policy that is the hybrid and send it to Chris.
It's under the addition.
Yeah, the red letter. Here it is. Got it.
I'm going to send it to Chris and let him look at it, just to make sure that we haven't done anything that we shouldn't have. The one piece that we may need to add something to, and there may already be an indication in here that this is allowed, there's a paragraph that has comment 1 beside it. It talks about self-administration of prescribed drugs, and it actually says it's prohibited. We have a process where if a parent signs off, a student can give themselves Tylenol, Ibuprofen, something like that. And I don't know if that wording is in here, to be truthful, so I need to look and see if it's not. Our nurses are going to ask that we put that language in there.
I guess this also falls under like the middle school, Blue Ridge Health?
Yes.
Or I mean...
Well, if Blue Ridge Health does that, then that's a licensed medical provider, and that would come with a note for provision that would also be signed by the parent. Yes. But that medication would actually, Travis, I think that medication then comes to the office and is provided by our school nurse. I think I'm right on that. You need to let me check on that.
Okay.
I don't think it's in there about like the Tylenol.
I don't think it is, and that concerns me, because it always has been. I would...
I think that would fall under Paragraph C on the third page. It really just talks about asthma or allergies.
See, I think that, I really believe...
Diabetes.
I think, Kim, that if we're going to allow self-administration, that we need to add something in C. That's a statement to the effect with parent permission and signature. And I'm certain that's what our nurses would want us to do.
And you can limit that to things over the counter.
Yes. It would be over the counter. Yes. So let me look into that. Okay? Did you get that, Joe? 6125 needs more work. And this is the last couple that I'll go over with any level of specificity at all, and I'm trying to remember why this one. This one is recruitment and selection of personnel, and it has, Section D has to do with the change that we've already talked about, I think, in the background checks. Anyone who is pre-K, a childcare provider like that, has to have a fingerprint background check. And the second paragraph under Number 2, it says to be employed, continue to be employed, or be permitted to volunteer, did you see that? Volunteer as a childcare provider or to otherwise have unsupervised contact with students. You have to have fingerprint background check. That includes all of our volunteers. All of the employees that that includes are bus drivers, teachers, assistants, volunteers, subs, and interns. They all have to be fingerprinted background checked, just for pre-K. Yes, we have. All of our pre-K teachers and assistants have been fingerprinted background checked. We have four subs, I believe it's four subs, Lambert, that have had that, and they are the primary subs that go to pre-K, and we have worked on the bus drivers, and then we ran into COVID. So by the beginning of the next school year, anyone who has the opportunity to have unsupervised supervision will be fingerprinted background checked, and we'll have that on record.
Is there something that we have in the policies about what, if somebody had an issue 20 years ago and had a charge as far as a background check, is there something that says what's acceptable and what's not?
I wish Tommy were here, and if you want an immediate answer, I've got his phone number.
Yeah, I don't. That's fine.
There's something in my mind that says 10 years, that we've dealt with some of that. But in order for us to get a firm answer on that, let's get him at the next meeting.
And I can look through the policies. It's not a problem. It just came to mind when we were talking about that.
He can answer it off the top of his head. Okay? And this is first reading, so if we put it down, and I have all of our staff here, most of our staff here on July the 16th, is that right? Yeah. Then they can throw answers out like that pretty quickly. Okay?
So for me, just to clarify, the fingerprinting is for only those folks that would be at Bright Adventure.
Yes, dealing with pre-K level students, unsupervised supervision, one-on-one. Now, if there's going to be somebody with them all the time, they don't necessarily have to have that.
Right. So would that be a speech therapist?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to play out some scenarios, because we're not going to have a, wouldn't have a true, what I would consider to be a true volunteer, having an unsupervised contact.
No.
Yeah.
And we've worked, we've even worked on the sub issue down there to where if we should happen to not be able to get a sub who has had that level of background check, they'll put a sub in a room, and that sub will never have unsupervised activity.
Gotcha. Okay.
Do you ever get off of the rest of the sex a few years?
Do you ever get off of it?
I know it'd be on your record permanent.
My understanding is that, you answered that question. I don't know.
I don't know all the details. There, I don't know that there's a way unless it was somehow dismissed or the conviction overturned, but I haven't read the statute lately, so...
But it'd be on any background check, wouldn't it? I mean, whether it's on it or off it, if they've been on it.
Yeah. Unless they had had something expunged or had been removed. And that would be a rare scenario in that type of charge.
Lambert said, and that takes an act of the governor almost, he thinks. Joe, did you mark that 7100 needs some clarification about how far back do we pay attention to those charges? You know, 10 years, whatever. Okay? Please and thank you. The last one has to do with licensure, and there's nothing major on here that's a change or anything, other than I want you to look at Section B, Line 3. The tribe pushed for a long time to be able to get some leniency and some work allowed so that we can have Cherokee language instructors, and this is the first time the policy's had it in. So we're at a point now where we can legally use them as a teacher, even though they may not have the same kind of licensure that everybody else does. And I'm going to say publicly that they've worked with us very well on that, and I'll look for that relationship to continue, just like it has been.
That's great.
Okay? And then the rest of these are light reading.
More board, right?
If you look at the last page, you'll see where the changes are on each one, because they're all technical changes. There's no wording changes. Somebody needed to prove that they were earning their salary, and they did a good job. Okay?
We're not going to talk about board and superintendent evaluation.
No. Yes, we are. That would be called the superintendent's evaluation, which is supposed to be scheduled soon.
That's right. That's right about that.
I've already got that written down for July. Okay? We've got some budget amendments that we need to look at. I'm going to throw mine out real quickly so I can be quiet for a while and my glasses can defog. I gave to you an email, a copy of an email that we had shared earlier, because we came up on a point where we needed to accept an RFP for some furniture at the high school, and that allows us to make a capital budget change. So instead of having on our capital budget list $40,000 for furniture to go into the cafeteria, I'm... to go into the cafeteria, I'm, um, where are my other numbers here? There's another one. Uh, seventy-nine thousand dollars to go into classrooms, you see that number? And then there's a number, there's sixty-three hundred sixty, that really is not on the capital allotment, that's something that's, that's additional. But those other two numbers, instead of having those on the capital budget, we can take those off now, because they're going to go to, uh, be purchased through the loan funding, which is super good, because I've got some things we need to put back on, that were on the second page. Um, we, we need a new mower at the, at the football field. Um, it's a real mower, and I don't mean it's not, not as opposed to a fake mower, I mean... You got my joke, didn't you? It's basically those old-fashioned mowers, but there's five of them strung out beside each other, and they're hydraulic. It's like you would use on a fairway. And you holding your breath? You ready? Fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. Okay?
I can check that out for salary.
Check that out for salary.
Uh, I'll, I'll need to get approval from my wife for that first, Lambert, okay? Um, but the savings that we had on that, that furniture allows us to do that, and we're going to, we're going to pursue a 60-month lease, uh, for that. And then at the, is, is this going to be a, a lease to own or a lease to use? There's not, there's not. Uh, so we're probably going to look, it'll probably be the lease to own, sort of.
What's the life of one of those?
Um, with the way that we're using one, because these are professional equipment, I believe that we can get 10 years out of it without any problem. The nice thing about this particular company is they're giving us a four or a five-year, uh, general maintenance. And also sharpening the blades on the reels, uh, which will run you anywhere from somewhere, I think Neil said, from four to six thousand dollars alone.
What are we going to do with the oval?
It, we, we traded it in and got four thousand dollars off the price. Unless you want to buy it, I've got a good used mower for sale for forty-five hundred dollars.
I don't have grass, so...
But we need to put that on the capital, on the capital budget, and so I would ask that you would allow us to do that, and we'll vote on that in just a little while. And then the other piece that we need to put on the capital budget is twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars for flooring in the cafeteria at the middle school. Jennifer has been asking and asking and asking, and now she and Stephanie have been able to do some work financially, so that we can afford that. Um, and it's a really good deal, and it'll take them about a week to put it down. So that'll help us out there. Those are the only two pieces to put into the capital outlay budget. Right. Right. And there's another, I'll just go ahead and throw this out there, there's another hitch that we ran into with the building project. We've had conversation back and forth with the architect and with some other folks about who is going to install the cable, that, the, the communications cable from the classrooms to the office. It's called CAT six cable. And, uh, we, we thought, and we had some records that made us believe that the architect was going to subcontract that, and we found out last week, last week, that he wasn't. And the ceiling's going up. Yeah. And so Karen and her team has quickly gotten bids, and we're in the process of getting that taken care of. Uh, so that's a little hiccup, but it's been handled, and it's not going to hold us back.
Good.
Okay? That's all I got, I'm tired of talking. That's longer than one of my sermons. Um, they are, if they're not gone, Lambert, it's very close. I checked with Randy on that a couple of weeks ago, he said that we had about two weeks left. They can only pick that scrap up on three days a week. But they'll be gone really soon. Then we've got some site preparation that we need to do some work on. Um, I told Evan to go ahead and get in contract, in contact with the, um, the playground equipment people and get something scheduled. Um, so I'm pushing hard to get that done by the first of the school year. Uh, it may be the middle of fall, depending upon when that company can get us in.
Uh, okay, yeah, that's fine.
But, but the buildings will be gone.
That's good, that's wonderful.
Stephanie's going to talk about the real reason we're here tonight.
Yeah, our final budget amendments for, um, fiscal year six thirty, 2020. And, um, I'll start out with state, and the, um, most of all the changes that you'll see in the budget amendments are transfers, um, movement between purpose codes. But in state, we did get an additional hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Of course, we just got a bad allotment, um, and that is, um, for nutrition services of eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. We've used part of that already for June to deliver meals to the students. Um, and we'll, we just got notification today that they've extended that till December thirty, and so we'll be using that for, um, the first part of the year to continue delivering meals. Then, um, we also got some funding for, um, technology, for, um, computers and devices for students, and some for, um, personnel, and, um, also for Wi-Fi, for community Wi-Fi. We also got a reversion of the hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars, which was for the business modernization. They never passed the budget last year, so those funds were not officially awarded, so they reverted those funds. But I believe they have approved that for next year, so we will be getting that for next year. Um, the other allotment that we received was sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars for transportation. That was for contingency funding, um, from some expenditures that we had for some major repairs on yellow buses. And other than that, everything was just a, a movement between purpose codes. For local current expense, there was one minor transfer between, um, purpose codes of about eighty-seven hundred dollars. Then on fund three, which is our federal grants fund, the only change I had there was, um, another, um, movement between purpose codes. Um, we did, in anticipation, because we didn't know if we were going to get our funding for nutrition services before the end of the year, we had made some allocations for nutrition services out of our federal funding of about twenty-seven thousand dollars, so that was, or twenty-two thousand dollars, I apologize. Um, then on capital outlay, I had no amendments to capital outlay. And child nutrition, we did increase the budget because of, um, the additional delivery of food. Uh, we're serving more students, and we're serving more meals, and then we're also getting, um, a larger reimbursement. So we increased the revenue, and we increased the expenditures, and then also we increased the indirect costs that they will pay to the district. Um, we've not ever, um, collected the full inter indirect cost, and this year we'll probably be getting more indirect cost to help with some capital improvements. Um, in our special revenue fund, there wasn't, um, much there, except for some transfers between purpose codes, just to close out the year. I did increase maintenance, um, by about ten thousand dollars, because with COVID, we were just able to do a lot more of the maintenance within this fiscal, the end of this fiscal year versus the start of the new fiscal year. And then had to increase utilities. I will be having to pay about eighty thousand dollars of utilities out of our fund eight, and we had budgeted that already, but had to increase that about fifteen thousand. And that's really all I had, so... I think hopefully we're going to close out the year, probably, um, at a, almost break even, so, whereas we had budgeted to have a loss, so I think we're going to come out in good shape this year, so...
Great, wow, that's wonderful.
That's plus.
That's huge, that's...
And if we can, if we can close out next year, work even? That's going to be another...
That'll be another.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Don't have any questions?
Any questions? No, I think we're good, thank you.
Um, give you some, some information on the jumpstart program. I think I might have spoken a little bit about this the last time we were together, but legis, when legislation came through in June or May, um, the, uh, House, I believe it was, said that we need to have some kind of a jumpstart program to get students kind of back into the groove. And they, they told us that we need to target students particularly from last year's second and third grade. Um, and so we've looked at their scores based on, uh, all of their numbers before March thirteenth, and have made some selections there. And then we have also been able to add other students to those, to those lists as well, to, to the point where we are looking today at about sixty students that we can serve. We've been, and the goal, no, 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 it's more than that. We're looking probably at about a hundred and twenty students that we can serve, I think, because we're looking at about fifteen students per classroom. That, and I told them not to go, I told Katrina Turbyfield and Amanda Sutton not to go any higher than fifteen in the classrooms, and, and actually shoot for lower than that, because I want, I want real solid one-to-one on this. And so they, the two schools, along with Katrina and Amanda, and Cheryl Savadra and Renee Peoples, are contacting parents to see who's coming and who isn't. If they don't want to have their student back in the school building, we can provide something that'll be remote for them. Um, that way we can at least do something. That will start on July twentieth, it'll run that whole week. The students actually won't show up until July twenty-first. We'll be running buses, uh, we'll be running nine buses for that, the bus garage, just help us coordinate so that we can get them all on nine buses. The students will come Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of that week, and then come back the next Monday, which is the twenty-seventh, and stay through Thursday. They'll start at nine, they'll end at two. Um, and then that Friday, July thirty-first, is a day for the teachers to, to summarize everything up for themselves. We have, we have allotted funding for eight teachers at their regular daily rate of pay, um, according to whatever rate they get during the school year. I think we've had seven applies so far. Um, I'm also going to be talking to nurses and have a nurse at, uh, East and a nurse at West to help us with those, with the transition we're in right now. I'm also looking at this as an opportunity, uh, for us to see how long it takes for us to get students in the building into classrooms. Because with the new guidelines that we're going to have for reentry, every student's temperature's going to have to be taken. And there are also questions that have to be asked of the students. We have to figure out how we're going to get their, their hands sanitized when they walk in the building. It's, uh, I'll just go ahead and, I'll just, I'll just say it, it's overwhelming, all of the things that we're going to have to do to keep everybody safe, but we're going to get it done.
Will they be wearing masks?
Uh, not at the elementary level, Lambert. They, we, we are not going to expect them to, but we will support if they want to.
Okay.
The, the governor's, uh, executive order last week, I believe it was, said that masks will need to be from sixth grade up. And on a personal level, I, I agree with that, because, uh, it can be difficult for young students. It can be difficult for the teachers of young students to keep them on.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Um, you know?
It can be difficult for...
It can be difficult for, no, you can't.
Yeah, well, I'm sitting here holding mine on my nose, because it won't stay on. And don't you say anything about the size of my nose, I don't want to hear it. But it's a trial run for us. So that's in place, um, and we'll also have some money left over, so that we can provide professional development for all, in reading, in the science of reading, for all of our teachers from kindergarten through fourth grade, and I may be able to sneak in the fifth grade as well on that.
Will the, will the adults be wearing masks?
The, the adults will be wearing masks if they are within six feet of the students. Um, I'm taking that very literally, because in order for a student to learn how to read well, they need to be able to see the mouth of the teacher. And, and so the, the conversation with our teachers is going to be, if you're, if you need your mask off, make sure you've got six feet in between you. And then, of course, we'll try to maintain six feet in between students as much as we can. My goodness. We'll try. You know, that's all I can say, we'll try.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That's jumpstart.
Did you say that was for rising third and fourth graders?
Yes. I guess. And, and that falls right into the read-to-achieve legislation that has been in place for a while, and then the money was taken away. Okay? Um, remote learning. Obviously, we experienced some remote learning during the spring of this year, but it was moderately effective, because we, we put it together so quickly. We've spent some extensive time thinking about how to make it, um, more efficient and effective. Uh, the state has required for us to develop a remote learning plan. There are sixteen points that we have to address, and there are many sub-points under each of those. Uh, we, we've been working on this fairly solidly for two to three weeks. Uh, we've got it in a real good draft format right now. Um, I've sent it to our DPI representative to look at. It's still not complete, and it's nine pages long, and that's not a narrative. Those are bullet points.
Oh, my goodness.
Um, I'll share that with you when we come back together on July the sixteenth. We turn it into the state on July the twentieth. So there's a, a good amount of work that's going there. We're taking into account the fact that not every student in Swain County has good connectivity, though. So we have to have multiple approaches on that, okay? Reentry, was hoping that the governor was going to say something today, I'd been told by one of my friends in Raleigh that he was going to, and then it got moved to tomorrow. Uh, I don't know if we're going to be an A, B, or a C. We're working on plans for all of those. The most difficult of those is going to be Plan B.
That's what happened, huh?
Yeah, uh, it's getting enough buses to take care of kids when you can only put twelve students on a bus is going to be a challenge. The only way that you could have more than twelve is if you put, if you have family members that sit beside each other, and then you can only put two on a bus, if you're in Plan B. Um, we're in conversation right now with how many students we can have in the building, really, because of the way they've written the legislation. It could be, the guideline is twelve students per a thousand square feet. Yeah. Yeah, and so this is just, it's going to be, it's, it's a major issue. That's why a lot of systems across the state are saying it's either A or it's C. I would like, if, if they don't give us A, I would like for us to do B, if there's any way. The kids need to be in the classrooms to get good instruction at some point. But we'll, we'll bring those plans back to you, and then we may, it's possible that we'll need to have a, another meeting to make a statement about what plan we're going to use. If, if the governor says we can have Plan A, as a district, we can choose Plan B or Plan C. Okay? Um, we would need to have a conversation about that, though, if we went in that direction. You can always be more restrictive, but you can't be less restrictive. Okay? Y'all have any questions about reentry, A, B, C, D, elemental P? Anything? Okay. That's all the information that I have, I think I've turned you glassy-eyed at this point. Or maybe it's just the fact that you've got a mask on, and, I don't know.
I can't see her smile.
I can't, I can't, and I hate that.
We're smiling.
I hate that, you know? I went to a restaurant the other day, and I said, "Take your mask off and let me see your face just for a..." and they wouldn't do it. They wanted to keep their job. And I appreciate that. That's all the information. Anything else? Then we need to move into our, um, action items, and we would start with personnel, I guess. Do you, does anyone think we need to go into closed session? No? Then can I proceed, Ms. Ma, Ms. Burns?
Please.
I would recommend that Swain County Board of Education grant Hannah Farmer, she is a kindergarten teacher, I believe, at East, at West Elementary, a one-year leave of absence effective July first, 2020, through July first, 2021. There are health issues that she needs to take care of for herself and her son.
One second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous?
Um, you should have the background check for Penny. You should have the background check for Penny Cody. Penny Cody has been working in our Parents as Teachers Program. Because Hannah, we, we anticipated that she would be leaving, we went ahead and interviewed, um, and Penny Cody was the selection of those that were interviewed, so I would recommend that you hire Penny Cody as an interim teacher at Swain West Elementary, um, effective August the seventeenth. the 17th of 2020. Correct? Yes.
Is Penny currently the, what is it called?
For teachers.
Teacher what?
Parents as teachers.
Yeah, parents as teachers.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we'll have to fill that.
I've already been in contact with Regen A about their wishes on that.
They cut that budget, so.
They didn't cut our budget, did they? Did they cut our budget?
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Okay. Okay. So we'll have to find a way to pick that up out of the school board salaries.
Well, they don't care.
Yeah, you can have mine.
They, both of them said they cut down 49. It was 50.
It was 50-something, wasn't it? So you're right, they did cut it down. But that's a program that's worth keeping.
Absolutely.
They're expecting a big cut in the state.
Sure. Yes, and we will, and with, in the conversation with Regen A, they expect for us to rehire.
Okay.
So that will be advertised. Once we hire Penny Cody, and she completes some expectations that they have for her, they want for her to train the next person as well.
Absolutely.
Which is a best smart move, and I said, well, I'm assuming that they'll pay her for that. They should. Okay? So my recommendation is that we hire her.
Absolutely. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have incoming.
Okay, so Lambert, motion, Mr. Hart, you okay for a second?
He is.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was, that was unanimous?
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the budget amendments as written, including the capital budget amendments with the numbers that I gave you.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay.
I'll shake it.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the budget amendments, including the capital amendments that Mr. Fennell mentioned, say aye.
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 That was unanimous?
And Ms. Burns, I believe that that is all that we have to cover tonight, other than make sure that you have July 16th on your calendar.
Mhm.
Okay? And we'll do, we'll go through the second reading on these board policies then, and also go over jumps, not jumpstart, remote learning and the reentry plans. Plus about a dozen other things, probably.
We're meeting at 6 o'clock on the 16th.
That's good by me, if it's good with you.
Everybody good with that? Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Anything else?
We didn't have anyone sign up for public comments, so. Motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there are the barking dogs, yay. That was unanimous, dogs included. Thank you.
Thanks to all of you.
Wow.
Thank you, Joe.